It is six oh one. I'll call the planning to orders. Mr. Clumber, would you make us in our pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're right. Uh, before we get started, uh, there, I've been asked to address the camera. We do have a vacancy and a zoning commission, so if anyone is interested, please, uh, come by and to City Hall and ask about applying for that position. Um, we're up here because we enjoy doing it, so it's, we've allowed us and certain of us have been doing it for a while, so it's a rewarding, um, theater prep, once a time. All right, at this, uh, point, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion to adopt the agenda, all right, you have a second.
Second.
All right, agenda is adopted. Um, let's see, we have our minutes from the Tuesday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting. Um, so I can, uh, fellow board members, are there any, are official members, are there, um, any issues or corrections that need to be made to the vast presented? All right. I don't have any, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
On my suggestion?
All right, and second.
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right.
Uh, they are approved.
So, all right, and it looks like we have, um, item number, I know it's number one and two on our agenda have been supposed to be continued, is that correct?
That is correct, and I just want to take a minute to just touch base on a couple of things. I know that there's some information that's flying out there, and I just wanted to, just, you know, for those of you who are not familiar with the annexations and are new members, um, you know, before we had this water and sewer suspension, we had a moratorium that prevented anybody from annexing or rezoning into the city for residential reasons. So, we can't have that moratorium forever due to the, the state is actually coming up with legal terms to say we can only have a moratorium for six months, and, you know, with our current water sewer situation, you know, we still do not have the available, you know, capacity. However, because we are no longer in that moratorium, anyone who has interest in property and has the support of a property owner has the right to apply for an annexation and rezoning. We cannot deny a permit or anyone from applying for it and it being heard. We don't have any control over how you proceed with that, um, as in us saying, no, you can't come and do this, or, or, um, you know, this isn't, you know, um, this is a lot. So, this is, you know, this is your right as a property owner to seek these unless we were in the moratorium, which we're not. So, um, also, you know, we, this is, uh, due to the number of units, it is a development of regional impact, so it does go to the state, the Department of Community Affairs. The reason why, I'm sure a lot of people saw on Facebook that the Atlantic Communities, um, posted a, um, an article about this. The reason why they know this, this, you know, town home proposal is because we applied for the development of regional impact through DCA. And then DCA sends it back to our Regional Commission, who gets, uh, all the information needed for transportation, economic development. They seek out environmental, cultural aspects, anything that could be impacted, uh, as a development of regional impact. Um, another, uh, you know, because we are rural, we have different thresholds for it, so like, the metro area, you know, four hundred units triggers that. Here in Jasper, because our county is, our county population is less than fifty thousand, our threshold is a hundred and twenty-five units. So, the state is kind of looking out for us when we, you know, as a rural community, as these counties with smaller populations, you know, bringing in this type of dense development, they want to make sure it's right. You know, not every county or city like ours has staff in place to either educate them or guide them on the way. So, um, we have informed the applicant that they do not meet the criteria for an annexation as one of the, um, app criteria is will you be a burden to the city? Obviously, during our current water and sewer capacity issues, it will indeed be a burden on the city, so. Just thought I'd give you guys a little refresher, and then when we discuss it at our September twenty-third meeting, we'll go into, I'll go in a little bit more in depth in the annexation process and give you guys, you know, a refresher, but I just wanted to give you, in case anybody reaches out to you as members of the mission and, you know, asks you, you know, what's going on, why is the city doing this? This is, we can't say no, so I just want to clarify that.
Did the county say no?
The county did say no.
I know, that's.
So, you know, and which is their right, but they have to file that with the state. So, they have to go through, if, if by chance, the city said, you know, yes, we'll allow you to annex in, and the county says no, then we go to an arbitration. So, and that is held through DCA again with the Department of Community Affairs.
So, they wouldn't clear the county hurdle first before it came to the city?
They don't have to, it's not a requirement. So, unless the, the county only has forty-five days from the receipt of the letter, so the, they get a letter ahead of time. The school board and the county, um, commissioners get a forty-five day letter. So, we send that out on July fifteenth, they receive it on the sixth of July. And so, they have forty-five days to file their objection with DCA. So, whether they file the objection is up to them, they may have said that they are going to file an objection, but there are timelines set, but I'm sure they're well aware of that.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much for, uh, explaining the process to us.
So, for this, we need two motions, one to continue, uh, the annexation, and then one to continue the rezoning for these, for items one and two.
Yeah. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to continue, uh, item one.
Motion to continue item number one to the September planning commission.
Yes.
Meeting. Uh, second.
All in favor? All right. All right, that motion carries. Then, at this time, I'll entertain a, uh, motion to continue item number two regarding the rezoning to the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, uh, meeting.
Twenty-third.
Oh, September twenty-third, yes, September twenty-third, twenty twenty five, planning commission meeting.
I'll make the motion, yeah. Continue the rezoning, or second?
All in favor?
All right.
So moved.
And so those will also be heard on the October sixth City Council meeting after the, the planning commission, but the council will also continue this at their Monday meeting, so, um, but I just wanted to state that so everybody knows.
That's right. And just as a, uh, background before we get to item number three, the planning commission is an advisory body. Uh, we could listen to, um, the presentations, the under requests being to the board, and we will then vote a tip by recommendation to the, um, City Council. All right, yeah, it's not, none of mine can vote, uh, we're here to gather information and assist the, uh, council in their decision. All right, at this time, uh, I'd like to, uh, bring up item number three. Uh, uh, request by applicant Dave Terry of thirty Wall Street LLC, um, for a, uh, several variances related to the potential development at that property. Um, is Mr. Terry or someone here on his behalf that would like to speak? Uh, you, you don't have to, but if you'd like to kind of talk about the project a little bit, what's your second, is that first to find?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I couldn't wait till maybe after the, Elizabeth wants to go first, yeah, that's, that's, that's about it with this. Elizabeth, you take two.
All right, again, here, there's the commission. So, our next item before user request by applicant Dave Terry for his property located at thirty Wall Street within the city's central business district. Mr. Terry is here requesting four variances to accommodate the adaptive reuse of a portion of his site into the pocket park with an outdoor dining and recreation area, and two onsite parking spaces. So, per, for a full overview of the site, the subject property is located on the east side of our downtown, up in northeast corner of Wall Street and Highway fifty-three, or Church Street. The property is in central business district and is comprised of three parcels that are approximately two tenths of an acre in size. However, I do want to note that this does include the existing building, so the remaining actual developable portion of the property is closer to fourteen hundredths of an acre. The property is served by city water and sewer and is improved within existing twenty-five hundred square foot building, which currently accommodates the Wall Street Harbor on the north end towards Depot Street. And then the remaining, uh, there's twenty-five hundred square feet of remaining leasable space there on the south end. And so, Mr. Terry has branded this overall project as Hensley Plaza, and the idea behind this is to sort of create a destination development here on the east side of our downtown that will honor the history of the Hensley Building, which was originally constructed as Jasper City Hall back in the eighteen thirties. So, a bit of site context here from the ground, on the north, we have the existing Hensley Plaza Building, which is our C V D, to the east, across Depot Street, we have the currently vacant Train Depot and the Jasper Junction Antique Store. To the south, across Highway fifty-three, we have the Dollar Tree, which is also seven C V D. And then to the left, across Bell Street, we have the Texaco Gas Station that is seven C two Gerald Commercial. So, Mr. Terry is looking to develop the area here in between the existing monument sign and the existing building into a pocket park and onsite parking area. To accommodate this, he's requesting four variances. So, the first variance is to reduce the required onsite parking from twenty-six spaces to two spaces. So, because Mr. Terry is redeveloping this property, we have a next stage for him to perform with our current regulations, including parking. However, due to the very limited remaining developable area on this property, it is not possible for Mr. Terry to provide the required twenty-six spaces for what we, we would consider to be the highest and best use, which would be a restaurant use. So, a bit of context on how we arrived at the twenty-six spaces. The existing building is three thousand one hundred seventy square feet. If we divide that by a hundred and twenty-five square feet, which is our parking ratio, uh, one space for one twenty-five square feet, for a restaurant use, we get twenty-five and some changed spaces, which obviously we have to add up because you can't have a portion of a parking space, so that is where that comes from. So, he, for that first request, he's looking to reduce the required onsite parking from twenty-six spaces into two spaces. And I have a site plan that I'll show after this, so I'll kind of help get a little bit of. Uh, so the next two requests are related to access. So, our zoning ordinance provides that non-residential access, driveway access cannot be provided within one hundred feet of an intersecting thoroughfare. So, we measure line this from the center line, we measure this from the center line of the proposed driveway to the center line of the intersecting thoroughfare, which in this case is Highway fifty-three or Church Street. Um, as I'm sure you can appreciate, because this is a very short urban block and there's a very limited remaining developable area, Mr. Terry is looking to locate that driveway approximately sixty-five feet there from the center line, so that the entrance is in a more logical and appropriate location. Beyond the one hundred foot physical separation, we have a requirement that if non-residential driveway access is provided within a parkway, it has to be channelized for right in, right out. Um, this is undesirable in this location because Mr. Terry may be having, you know, food trucks or other vendors that would come through, that would have difficulty navigating, you know, if there's a meeting in that makes it right in, right out. Um, yeah, in addition, there's only going to be two parking spaces here, so it's not like there will be a lot of left turny conflicts, you know, at this particular intersection. There's also very good visibility in this area. And then the final request is to eliminate the requirement to screen the parking area from the public right of way with a wall or solid landscaping. So, again, due to the exceptionally small, small size of this property, he is requesting to eliminate this standard so that he can really maximize the remaining developable area onsite. Um, but I feel like it is reproducing that with the existing monument sign that he has right here. It's eight feet tall, and the parking will be on the other side of that, so that will help to kind of provide a nice visual screen, um, there from the right way. So, this is a, uh, blown up image, just sort of the remaining developable area, this is what I'm referring to, it's, you know, uh, fourteen hundredths of an acre. Um, so it's quite small, and it's essentially the area in between the monument sign and the existing building. And then this is the site plan for his proposed development. So, while the site size is already exceptionally small, G dot is also going to be have, uh, requiring approximately eight foot, eight feet of right of way, which is also going to stretch the size of the site. Um, and then as you can see, he's got, uh, the outdoor dining area just there on the south side of where the future rest option will likely go. He's got, um, a nice little turf lawn cornhole area, a stage, you know, something that will really activate this space and make a good use of this space. And then on the other side, he's got the two parking spaces, one of which is required to be, uh, EDA accessible. And this is just sort of the general layout of the site. And then I wanted to include this illustrative rendering, um, the plan, I think, has deviated a little bit from this, obviously it doesn't show the parking, but I think that this does a nice job at conveying how this proposed development will really activate the site. Uh, that's something that we certainly want to see in our downtown, and we think it's going to make a great use of this space, um, if it's approved and able to be activated. So, section ninety-four two ten of our zoning ordinance outlines the approval criteria for variance requests, and so I'll go through them. The first is that exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular property in question because of its size and shape for topography. Uh, obviously, this is met, the property is exceptionally small and located within a short urban block. The second condition is that application of the ordinance to the particular property should create unnecessary hardship. Here again, it's established that this is met as compliance of our current regulations, um, on this property that was created very long ago would create unnecessary hardship due to the exceptionally small remaining developable area on the parcel. And our zoning ordinance just unfortunately right now does not contemplate really for these types of adaptive reuse projects in this more sort of urban context. The third criteria is that the exceptional conditions are peculiar to the property involved. Uh, we established that this is met, and the location of the nearly a hundred year old building, the property exceptionally small size are peculiar. The fourth criteria is that exceptional conditions are not the result of the actions of the property owner, uh, the location of the building, its short urban block, and the property's small size were not created by Mr. Terry. And then the final criteria is that relief, if created, will not cause substantial detriment to the publichood, nor impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. And it's established that this is met, as approval of these variances will allow the property owner to reasonably redevelop this inbuilt property on addressing as many of our current regulations as possible. This proposed development is also consistent with the city's city policy goals for encouraging more adaptive reuse and activating, uh, our downtown area. So, that is recommending approval of the variance requests, subject to our standard condition while we're under the temporary suspension. Just acknowledging that if we approve these variances, I guarantee that the city will have water and sewer capacity for future development on the property. Um, who will also attach a condition that just says, Mr. Terry will be required to comply with all other applicable, uh, site development regulations within our zoning ordinance. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions, and Mr. Terry will answer as well.
Uh, so, how do we rabbit, the, the required two spaces, is it targeted there for some parking, or?
Yeah, so we are not requiring two, he is providing two, so that's why we're going from twenty-six to the two that will be provided.
Okay, okay. Yep.
So, I sort of have a follow-up question, since we're going from the twenty-six down to two. That's already a kind of a busy place, and if that is a restaurant, which will add more busyness to that area, where are people going to park?
So, the idea is that, you know, most of our businesses in the downtown area don't have any real site to speak of, like, their building is their property, and they all benefit, and they're in the central business district, so Mr. Terry's property is, they all benefit from the on-street parking that we have. So, there is on-street parking on Northeast Street, Depot Street, even Corp Street, as well as up on Main Street. Uh, Mr. Terry also privately owns a lot on the other side of Wall Street that he can utilize for his employees, or he could direct his patrons to park there. Um, so, you know, we feel like, especially just when this use will be more active, you know, especially like in the evening hours when the courthouse is closed, that everything should balance out. Um, you know, a lot of cities actually have gotten rid of parking minimums in their downtowns altogether, because the idea that it should be a walkable environment, people can park and walk, you know, to get to where they need to go, they don't have to have the parking immediately available onsite.
So, in, based on my previous jurisdiction, we did away with parking requirements and now, now, because there's no way to track it, there's no way to, if you have no room to grow, due to constraints like this.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to add, if I could, you know, on our community engagement manager and working with our VDA, they're working on ideas to kind of better educate the public as to where they can park. Um, so that will help, you know, hopefully kind of diffuse some of the traffic across downtown as opposed to, you know, you know, some of these side streets, everything.
Goodie.
If you go to page four in your presentation, um, that other section that is on Yoder Street, that's between the property that we're talking about and the Train Depot, how owns that property and what is the intention and what's aligned with that?
So, I think Mr. Terry might do a better job of speaking to that, because I know that you've spoken with that property there both before.
Which, which one?
So, he's talking just to the east of your site, are you talking about the remaining?
The Pope House.
Grass area, yeah.
Oh, the Grand House, yes, yeah, that is a Kim Jarvis property, so, um, yeah, been in discussions with her, she's supportive of the, of the site plan, so, um, I, I don't know what her future intent is, but right now, she's just holding on to the property. So, now, I could just, you know, piggyback off of what, um, uh, Elizabeth said, I think she summarized it really well. And just to preface, I really appreciate the planning commission's time and, and for this opportunity, um, so.
Could you just state your name and add to the record?
Sure, um, yeah, Dave Terry, um, Jasper, Georgia is where I reside. Um, so, just to, um, pick up on the parking, uh, we think this project is a, is a catalyst for really, um, to broader discussions, you know, one, how do we, um, solve for downtown parking in general? And if it can lead to, um, discussions around utilizing other parking lots in the downtown area, we think that's a good thing. Um, and then secondly, we want this project to encourage alternative to, as an alternative to other vehicles. So, there's, um, you know, a bike, a bike rack, we want to encourage more walkability downtown. And so, um, as Elizabeth said, I think this, uh, aligns with how other small towns begin to evolve their parking, and it usually starts like a project like this, and makes, you know, people think creatively around how to get to, you know, destination or, or a building.
I agree.
Um, and then, I think, you know, again, Elizabeth summarized what we're here for tonight, and the specific ask is just the support of these four specific variances, um, and just allowing us to continue, um, to advance forward on the project. So, there's been, um, erosion control, you know, liner up for six or seven months, um, as part of the permit approval process. So, by approving this, it'll allow us to move forward on the paving surface and the other things that you saw in the site plan. Um, and then, just so the committee, um, hears directly from me, this project is, um, really had a, a shared vision from the, from the outset to accomplish two goals, you know? This is a special place, it's a special property. It's, it's one of the first, um, lines of sites that people see coming in from, you know, Big Canoe and, and, um, fourteen thousand cars now on Highway fifty-three, so, um, in, given the property's history, it goes back to nineteen thirty-six, it used to be the old city hall and jail. It was the previous owner, um, we really wanted to honor the Hensley family legacy. So, given the fact that it was, um, you know, such a special place, we thought long and hard about what is the highest and best use of that courtyard area? And it was really about honoring their legacy through creating a community gathering, a third place. Um, we feel like this fills a very significant and needed void in the community. Um, people want more things to do downtown, they're looking for family-friendly entertainment options, and, um, we're taking our time to try to find the right tenant that aligns with that vision, and approving these variances will allow us to, um, we think, you know, be able to find that tenant, um, that will be able to continue with what the, the goals of the project are, which is really to honor their legacy and also to bring, um, you know, just some vibrance and to activate this area behind Main Street, which again is part of the, the new, um, you know, boundaries, and we want to make sure, um, we, we have a welcoming and inviting place throughout the downtown Jasper area, and that, maybe not just on Main Street. Um, the only other thing I'll add, City Council, um, Elizabeth asked to, um, for me to reach out to maybe neighboring properties as well, which is always, you know, a, a concern with an initiative like this, so, um, the neighboring properties, I can, I wanted to submit just for the record. This is a letter of support, um, from the New York Pizza, um, uh, owner, and, you know, I won't read it, but to add this little guarantee favor of the variances. The other, um, the other letter of support, and then she's here this evening, um, Jeannie and James are the new owners of the Train Depot, which is directly behind, um, you know, the, the building, and they are, you know, on the record as supporting the initiative, that's a letter from them. Um, the, um, Dollar Tree, I have not reached out to, um, Amy Leek, of course, who this project would, um, impact, um, I think the most, because she is, um, you know, in the existing space. She's here, and she'd like to say, you know, a few words for the record, or just if you'd like.
If I may, sure, thank you, Dave, um, welcome.
I sent you back.
Amy Leek, and I am with the Wall Street Barber, um, one of the tenants in the Hensley Plaza. Um, yeah, we're seeking the acceptance of these variances, and it, I hope it's not premature to say that, um, it is coming down the pipe that Wall Street become a one-way street right there, and that will allow for angled parking too, because I know Mr. Clumber had a question about that. So, if that is eventually approved, the one-way of Wall Street would have angled parking, thus leaving more parking for, of course, our customers. So, whether this new building is a restaurant or an outdoor old-timey bargain barn type store, whatever it is, all of that would directly affect us and benefit us. So, once the erosion control, um, silk string fence can be removed, I think it would be much more aesthetically pleasing for the new tenants and for people who are coming along. It still looks like it's under construction and however it isn't. So, if we could at least move forward with some of that, I think just from an aesthetic standpoint, it would already look better. So, if you have any questions?
Hey, do you have a hard time with parking down in the metro?
Um, we have our challenges, to be very honest, yes, because, um, if you park on to the side that is closest to our building, it is too close to the stop sign there, so we're finding, may I show you on this illustration? Um, we find that our patrons are parking here, which the road is too close over to the side, so they're parking here, which, you know, it does cause a little bit of a bottleneck, um, we would like to see these reserved for our space. And may I draw attention, there's plenty of parking spaces here along the backside of the depot, and those kind of get taken up on court base. We knew this going into it, we knew that this would be a challenge, and with our exponential growth, thankfully, we weren't expecting it to be a problem right yet. So, it's a good problem, but yet we are having some, some issues with that, so if we can move forward with that one-way street, that would be wonderful too.
So, the, the Train Depot, you said something to their?
Yes. This is right, hi.
Hey, um, so, this is only room work, but I understand that maybe hospitality venue as well?
It, it has that potential, yes.
Okay.
Jeannie, could you pop in, state your name for the credit, we'd like to hear kind of about there.
Well, I, I, I mean, you may not know, may not want to talk about it, which is, is fine, I'm just, I, the only reason I'm asking you is there seems to be a need for a holistic plan for that part of
Yes, correct.
the city, and if we start having, if Dave gets a, a great tenant, which I know he's going to do, you open up, whatever it's going to be, we hope you do that, we, we may find ourselves with a much bigger problem that would not be good for any of you. If there's no parking down there, so I, I just, I don't know what the solution is, but I think if, if we're going to have this same conversation two months from now for the Train Depot, we ought to at least think about it now, before, you know? Yeah, potentially make a bad decision, or listing it for the, that point of town.
And that's, and that's something that we, we are working on, so, you know, we, we understand that there are challenges with downtown, with the parking. We're hoping, you know, with Perro Park, you know, next year, another seventy spaces, and we understand that the court parking is, uh, where's Amy?
Yeah.
Uh, is an issue, and we're trying to work with the courthouse to use the court parking, and if not, to open that court parking to public parking, I know there are many signs promoting it now. Um, they say the average American will walk a quarter of a mile, not in a small town, so, I mean, I've seen that several times, so, uh, so being able to have more onsite or, you know, trying to find a reconfiguration of some of the, the flows down here, uh, is something that we'll definitely be looking into in two months, Chris, we, we, yeah, that's not.
We, we, yeah, that's not gonna be addressed in the next two months, just because of all the legal requirements in order to change the ordinance. So unfortunately, we're working on it, but, you know, between.
That's the parking to the left of the depot. Train depot. You own, you actually own that park?
Yeah, I said that, yes.
Is that wage?
It's actually, I think it's dedicated on your deed, actually.
I think it's Six Fox or something.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And is there signage up that that's for that property?
To the, to the left, there are signs along that fence along there. And there's just a couple to the right as well.
You know, of all we explore, the things that are gonna happen with the roundabout and the widening of fifty-three, we're gonna have a little better sense of timing and then what lands left over for us to be able to try and reconfigure some, some area over there or, you know, do away with the, the parking requirements or, you know, go face.
With parking, I'm not sure.
Is, is Wall Street one-way independent of this G-Dot project through?
No, it's, it's two ways. It's two-way traffic.
It's two-way, it's two-way traffic.
Like the, the conversion of Wall Street to one-way, is that a part of like this?
No, that's Mr. Terry's.
Okay.
Perpetual.
Okay, okay.
And how far is that along the lines of getting that converted?
I believe that the last that it was left was after Mr. Terry spoke at the council meeting. They asked him to get the letters of support from the neighbors and put it in writing so that we could move forward with the legal hearings. So the neighbors, obviously, I have a vested interest. The gas station just put over a million dollars into that. Obviously, they, they have, and they've put in the sidewalk and everything. So they, they definitely have a vested interest in this. So, and then, you know, as Ellie alluded to, Mr. Terry's additional parking. You know, we do have something in our regulation that does say you can see even S U P for parking that is five hundred, within five hundred feet of your project. His property does meet that requirement. However, we do not want people crossing fifty-three. We do not want to encourage as a city by having him apply for an S U P to encourage them to go over there. And G-Dot has indicated that they will not put a crosswalk.
Okay.
There is a sight distance issue there with coming around that corner. So, and by us, and we, we discussed it separately with, with Mr. Terry and legal to be like, we don't want to encourage an S U P.
What's an S U P?
A special use permit. So we don't want to encourage people to cross a dangerous road or what could be considered a dangerous road.
But they do have access if they go up to.
Yes, there's the signalized, if they go up to the signal and utilize that, that's one thing. But that takes it out of the five hundred feet.
I was gonna say, most people are not gonna do it.
They're gonna make the, they're gonna play Frogger.
Frogger on fifty-three.
Yeah.
But that does not prevent Mr. Terry from utilizing that or for his patrons to.
Or his employees parking over there and other ways to, you know, maximize the, the onsite.
Is there any way to improve the crosswalk? I've walked all the time down by the Walgreens. That's a terrible change.
So you're at, when they, when they put the roundabout in, they have to put crosswalks, lights and sidewalk.
Okay.
So it's actually gonna be, I know the fifty-three and the roundabout are huge, you're gonna be a vague headache. But the, the sidewalk, you're gonna be able to walk from Ingalls all the way downtown. And that's safely being able to cross at this, you know, although the lighted intersection, but I don't know how many times that, that signal has knocked off its pedestal because the map trucks can't make that turn or don't see it. They must have, since I've been here, they've replaced that at least eight times. Yeah, they, I mean, I'm surprised it's still up. It's been up for a good three weeks now.
Yeah, it was down before. It's only not your time.
Yeah, it's only, yeah, at least, you know, twice a month, somebody hits that curb and just pops over it and goes over, so.
David, do you have any tenants that have said no, potential tenants because of parking? Has that been an issue for renting the space?
Not specifically because of parking.
Okay.
But it's, they want to understand like what the options are and how it would work. And so being able to kind of give them clarity with, with this, you know, would, would definitely help. But a lot of them haven't, you know, expressed concerns either because this is sort of the norm, you know, high-density downtown districts.
Yeah.
One thing I wanted just to circle back on, just because this is for the record. For anyone who, who hears this, you know, want to be clear that G-Dot is completely separate from City of Jasper. And there's been a lot of kind of understandable skepticism around, is this Highway fifty-three project gonna be, you know, actually move forward? It's been talked about, discussed for, geez, I forget, twenty-plus years. So I, I will say for the record, I have a closing with G-Dot. Unfortunately, you know, on, on Friday where they have completed the right-of-way purchase. So that is my understanding, like the final steps is them doing all of these property right-of-way purchases before they move forward. So this, the G-Dot one-way is real, you know, it is happening. And what we sort of started to talk about at the last City Council meeting, I would really welcome the opportunity to partner and collaborate with the Planning Commission on how do we create the best experience back here? You know, we're, we're sort of both wanting to understand the G-Dot impact. You know, there's gonna be a lot of construction going on. How do we not, you know, neglect those small businesses that might be affected by the G-Dot? You know, bringing up questions that will impact, you know, Jeannie and James as they kind of go through with their, you know, renovations. So we're, we are all for, you know, Jeannie, I know feels strongly about this as well, around, you know, how can we create the best, you know, walkability, the best pedestrian access, the best safety? And, you know, you, you really, the Planning Commission are the experts. So we're, you know, we're all ears if it means having, you know, ad hoc meetings outside of this to discuss, you know, how we create the best experience for the community. But it's definitely something that I personally think does need sort of a sense of urgency. And the, this was especially again with the G-Dot right-of-way that's about to take place. And with, you know, Jeannie and James wanting kind of clarity on what, you know, options they have. It's something that we should, you know, hopefully be able to further discuss sooner than later.
Okay. Right, so where does that work done? Like who, who does that work?
Law work.
What Dave's talking about, re-in, re-envaging that little section of town to make it more conducive to development and to.
So we would, we would have to do a study. So it would involve several different aspects. I know that the, the Downtown Development Authority is seeking the Main Street America designation. I know that they're working on other items. In order for us to, you know, the way that I would approach it as planner would be, we would, we would approach it as a holistic, not a piece by piece. So, you know, we already know parking is a situ, is a, is a issue. We know that the sidewalks need to be approved. We know that the stormwater is a three-million-dollar lift right now, you know? So, you know, we know that individual problems down there or issues, but obviously we would have to do a study. We would, you know, meet with all of the, the downtown, you know, all of that, see what's going on. And then take our existing downtown CBD guidelines.
So how does that get started? Like, how do you, like, is it on your radar or is it something on your to-do list? Is it something that needs to be initiated from this commission? Is it City Council meeting? Like, how does that answer Dave's question about making it that?
So I, you guys, it is completely, you know, within as a planning commission to request the council to indicate that you would like to move forward with doing a downtown development study or look at the ordinances for that. So Ellie and I and Emily would be your staff people as we are today. But, you know, they're gonna look at our, you know, kind of workflows, kind of plan, all the work that's going on right now. So, you know, it would probably be a late week if we're doing it in-house because we don't have the funds to do it. You know, to hire a consultant. But the planners, who we would hire would be planners. So basically Ellie and I to do it, outside of Ellie and I doing it.
Yeah, I've heard, you know, if, if you all were maybe attending DDA meeting or something or talk about this, because I think that they are also, you know, I had a steering committee recently for the comprehensive plan. You know, we talked about some of the issues with employees parking, you know, on Main Street and some of that parking and maybe coming up with a holistic plan. You know, maybe Mr. Terry would be open to having employees park on his lot or something like that. I think the DDA would be effective in starting that as well and they're more immediate. You know, because while we can work with the ordinances and everything, you know, we can get rid of parking minimums, but that's not gonna solve our problem. That's just gonna make it so that they don't have to come before you for a variance.
So with the comprehensive plan, be a tipping point to get that work started? I know, you know, obviously with the survey identified parking is a big issue. So is that, I'm just trying to figure out all this works, because they're saying as a D, you're saying all this stuff has to happen, but it doesn't sound like anybody's initiating, initiated that work. We're doing the planning, long-range planning commission, which is boggling, but it's still just, I need to get it done.
So the comprehensive plan is our long-term policy document. But within that plan, we have the community work program. And so that is where we get our action items. So if we add address downtown heart to our community work program, in five years, the state expects us to have made progress on that. So that is certainly something that we can bake into that plan.
And to expand on Ellie's sake, we also have, we're also gonna be breaking down those character areas, right? So the downtown area is gonna be its own character area. So we're gonna dive into that as well. And also, you know, the work program, having it in our work program will make us eligible for grants. So not only the comprehensive plan itself making us eligible, but having this as a specific desire makes it, makes us more available to grants. So we've identified that it's an issue, we would like to address it, you know, that's the first step.
Yep. I would, I would just reinforce what, you know, Mary just said. And Chris, to your, your point, I think you're asking a lot of really relevant questions. Like, you know, what, what's the saying? The, the first part of solving any problem is the recognition, you know, phase. So I think everyone here recognizes like, hey, this is going to be a problem either now or in the future. And now what are the steps to kind of, you know, proactively plan and stay ahead? So, you know, in addition to the, the twenty-year comprehensive plan, that will give us a lot of feedback. There's a Kim Lee Horn study, a lot of things that were done around the amphitheater planning that sort of validate the things that we're talking about. You know, they, they recommend the concept for a one-way conversion. They recommend, you know, making this area behind Main Street more vibrant. So I'm with you, like, how do we keep the momentum going? Like, and, and I will say, like, a huge factor, Chris, is just, it, the, all the stars have to align with motivated property owners. You know, certain property owners that, you know, wanna take pride in the area. And this isn't, you know, any, to be any kind of, you know, the veiled threat or anything, but just, there's only a certain window of opportunity where property owners are going to stay motivated and committed and vested. And if we have the right, you know, folks through those letters of support and the property owners that wanna help change that area for the better, then it goes back to what I said. Like, there has to be a sense of urgency. And I, you know, I hear a lot, like, just things move, you know, slower in small towns and local government. But this is one where I'd encourage the Planning Commission, Jeannie, Amy and I were at the DDA meeting last night. We told them the same thing, like, let's all come together to really make this, you know, top of mind. Let's continue to have these kind of discussions. I encourage all of you to, you know, we're gonna be discussing this at the September eighth City Council meeting. I'm sure they're gonna wanna hear not just, you know, what your vote was, but, you know, your, your feedback on where this aligns with your overall, you know, initiatives as well. See, I apologize, we seem to be getting in the weeds concerning the variances. But I think one question that we're trying to get to is, as a commission, what do we? If we're in agreement. In agreement. What do we need to do to officially state to City Council, we want this one-way street to go forward? Because I, I've said in the committee meetings, I've said with the city hall.
Mm-hmm.
Besides the variance requests, like, oh, I'm glad the commission don't come up all that often.
So as far as the one-way, I think, you know, there will, there, there will be a public hearing. And if you all want to present that as a whole to them, that you support the one-way, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be reviewing that as well. Will, that'll be part of our review as the planners. So we're gonna, you know, be involved in that. As far as, you know, proposing an additional or, you know, looking at our downtown rigs, you know, we can definitely send, or I can send on your behalf as your staff member, a letter to council stating that, you know, we would like to explore this because essentially the way it's supposed to work is the Planning Commission is in charge of their zoning codes. So, but because we are small and City Council is also your Board of Learning Appeals, because we think we don't have a VZA, so it's kind of convoluted because we don't have that extra step. So they are more involved in the zoning ordinance as well. So, you know, saying that you wanna do this and these are the items you wanna address specifically, overall, we can definitely work on a letter to them for that. And then, you know, I think there's more information gathering that we need for the one-way as there are other property owners that are involved and have made a great amount of investment in their properties that may not be for it. So I think we need to hear from everybody in regards to it and not just, you know, make a decision without hearing all the facts.
So what, what is that gonna ask?
Um, I believe the task was left with Dave. So when Dave presents the information to council, then we can start working forward to the legal public hearing. Um, and then, you know, we have to notify all the neighbors as well. And we, there's just, you know, the, 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 the legal.
So that's the trigger, Dave, you made the request.
Yep.
Counsel.
Yep, that's the September, yeah, September eighth. Yep, it's been in, it was in the council infrastructure committee. We had the discussion at the last City Council meeting and then the vote is coming up on September eighth. So, yeah, and there, so just to, you know, full disclosure, the, the gas station, you know, owner, I just, I met with two hours ago. So, you know, his position is, he, he really likes to abstain. He, he is all for the variances. He told me verbally, he's the, what concern he has is until the one-way conversion actually happens and the construction is done, you know, what will the experience be for somebody trying to take a left on fifty-three until it converts to a one-way? So, you know, yeah, in, in discussions, there's, you know, usually never a hundred percent, you know, yes consent. So I think I definitely want to make sure his, you know, voice is, is being heard. We had a, a good, you know, discussion around what his concerns were. Everyone else I've talked to was very much for it. So, you know, including the folks who provided the, the written letters. And then I would just, you know, along these lines, a final thought, you know, this, we just finished this, you know, storybook. I have with a lot of before and after photos. I think, you know, everyone on the, the mission meeting has driven by the property before. And it was, you know, it was very dilapidated. There's been a significant amount of just sweat equity and effort put into trying to, you know, bring that property back to life. You know, just the, the monument sign, you know, something that complements the, the building architecture. So, you know, again, we, we hope Planning Commission, you know, factors that into, you know, again, when it comes to approving the variance and recommendations to, you know, continue to advance, you know, the project. And if you didn't see what the property looked like before, you know, I'm happy to, you could look at the, the before pictures. You know, there was, the parking lot was never usable. It was, you know, we had to demo the concrete. There was, you know, a billboard, V-shaped billboard that frankly was kind of an eyesore, you know, that we, we took down in the process. There was um, you know, a billboard, knee-shaped billboard that frankly was kind of an eyesore, you know, that we we took down in the process. Um, so, um, I'm happy again, if you wanna see kind of what the transformation, you know, has been. If you don't, you hadn't seen the property, um, I'm I'm happy to share that, you know.
Okay, um, any other, do you guys want to comment that's time for us? Hi. Um, from my perspective, I I've been um, I'm inclined to approve the the four variances with the um conditions listed by the staff on page nine here. Um, and also subject to our standard condition of uh water sewer uh, infrastructure issues. Um, yeah, any questions, comments, concerns, views?
And procedurally, normally we would do each your.
Oh, yeah, 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 I I was just, just, just wanted to throw it out there and just to kind of see if there's any other questions.
Before we get there.
Okay, all right, um, all right, so we will look at uh the first variance requested, which was a variance um. To reduce the onsite parking uh from twenty-six spaces to two. Um, do I have a um motion to approve or deny? I'll make a motion to approve. You know, the second?
Second.
With our additions?
With con, with conditions, motion, your motion is with the conditions, has that pick?
Second with conditions, all right.
And all in favor of approving the variance subject to the conditions? Uh, I have a recommendation is moving on it, it's approved. All right, the second variance saw is the various to reduce the required separation between non-residential driveway and the central line of intersection thoroughfare. In this instance, how we vary, how we could agree from one hundred feet to sixty-five feet. Um, do I hear a motion to approve, recent, uh, recommended approval or denial of uh that variance with attached conditions? Motion to approve the variance to reduce the required separation between the non-residential driveway and so on, the intersection thoroughfare. From one feet to sixty-five feet with the staff recommendation, our tradition. Do I have a second?
I'll say as a variant for the conditions.
All in favor? Another, okay, approval granted. Yeah, third variance is variance to provide non-channel out of non-business driveway access with a hundred feet of central line of another thoroughfare, how we get three. Um, do I have a motion or do I have a recommendation for approval of that uh of that variance with attached conditions?
Make the motion with with the listed conditions, or?
That would second, all in favor? All right, pass that all up. Motion carries, all right. And final variance is a variance to eliminate requirement to screen parking lots from view of public streets using buildings landscape or combination of buildings landscaping. Um, do I have a um motion to approve that variance with the listed conditions?
Motion to approve the variance to eliminate the requirements for parking with the staff recommendation condition.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Yeah, all in favor? All right, all right, so that answers all of the fun. All right, so the last thing on our agenda is I would entertain a motion to, unless there's anything else that anyone would like to contribute? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, thank the commission, board and cause some of of a floral, thank you for that. And back to um your question about how how does this get started? There was a study done back in two thousand eighteen that is still live and ready to go with the one-way on there in the tenure plan. So, we're in twenty twenty-five, so in just a couple of short years, we will have met our tenure requirement, our tenure hope for that one-way street. It only took us eight years to get it on there, so thank you, commission, I really appreciate what you've done for Mr. Terry.
Yeah, I talked about. All right, um.
On another note.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to surprise you guys of um, the city is working towards having um Carl Vincent come here. And do um a planning admission course and a planning and zoning course for both you guys and the council. So, they're gonna keep you, they're gonna come to us, so y'all don't have to travel to them.
Yeah, I did that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and then you did the other one, too.
Yeah, I just did the, I just did the one.
Oh, just the regional timing one, okay. So, um, yeah, so just you might get a couple of dates, you know, Brandon Douglas may re, uh, reach out to you with a couple of dates for the proposed section.
Do you have any rough idea what those dates are? Month, two months, six months?
Probably, I'm gonna say by the end of the year because they did um a a um, change our budget around.
A little, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it does work, definitely works well.
All right, uh, here in. Get that, one more, there, sure, sure. If you are drafting a letter for us to give the recommendation to city hall, is that a letter that you are going to present for us to vote?
So, I will do. So, um, I can do it one of two ways. I can send you an email with what I draft to send to them and you agree for me to send it. And then, um, I will also discuss it at the work session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, and uh, we didn't talk about that, but I I'm in approval of a recommendation to the council that we need to pursue this, the way to. At least rest some of the parking issues, as long as, you know, obviously, by some of the property owners. Uh, all right, all right, uh, anything else?
Questions, comments, concerns?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, second, all in favor? All right, all right, you're adjourned, thank you all.
General, six fifty seven.